That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Opens Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. If you will, join me as we say our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First up on our agenda will be the roll call for tonight. And we'll start with Ms. Debbie V. Gomez.
Here.
Ms. Maria Cruz Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sean Glovier.
Here.
Dr. Maria Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Felicia Moody.
Here.
Mr. Esteban Serta.
Here.
And Daryl Owens is here, that's me, and we have a full board here present. Awesome. No one is absent? A full house here. Next on the agenda, we'll be taking a look and see if there's anyone that has signed up for any public comments on the agenda items of tonight. No one has signed up for agenda items, okay. And next, we'll see if anyone has signed up for any items that are not on the agenda.
Not for non-agenda items.
And there's no one also signed up for non-agenda items. Okay, thank you. We'll now move to Section 5 of our, uh, of our meeting. That is Special District Recom- Recom- Recognitions. And I'll turn it over to Dr. G.
And thank you, parents, for being patient. We had Board Appreciation Dinner. We ran a little bit late with that. Our high school students were serving their meal for our board members. It took a little bit longer, so thank you for being here. I know you're here to see your kids get recognized, so we'll get right into that. So if we could have our junior high, high school, our, not junior, our junior high and our two elementary campuses, spelling bee principals come down and... How was it about, oh?
I'm gonna start.
You're gonna do it?
I'm starting. They're gonna finish.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I just looked up and saw you there.
Surprise! Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Toya Keys. I'm one of the instructional program coordinators for the district, but I'm also the coordinator of the spelling bee for Kennedale. And I'm just very, very excited about this because spelling bee, it took place the week of November 27th, and our two elementary campuses and the junior high participated, and it was intense. And it was so amazing, and I'm so proud of these students and the opportunity that they're given. So, just so that you all know, the winner from each campus, we had a third, second, and first. The first-place winner will go to Burleson so that they can participate in the area B, and they'll participate against Burleson, Crowley, and Everman. It's on February 1st. If anybody's available, just let me know, and I'll give you the information. And then, from there, if one of our people are crowned the winner, they will go to the regional B at TCU. So, each campus will come up and recognize for third place. I have a little B goodie bag because I believe they did a great job. And then, the second-place winners not only get a goodie bag, but because we registered early, they were able to get a free year subscription to Encyclopedia Britannica so they can look up all of those complicated words that they spelled. And then, our first-place winner also will get a goodie bag, the Encyclopedia Britannica certificate, and they'll represent their campus for it. So, Mrs. Clark?
Okay, we will start with our third-place winner, Mina McLaughlin. Our second-place winner, Olivander Lyon. And our first-place winner, Kalea Lofton.
And I'm gonna suggest we do this, let's call them all down, and then we'll take individual pictures with each campus.
And for Delaney Elementary, we have third-place Sawyer Ordones. Jake Bustos. I don't think he's here tonight. And then, our first place is Isaac Alvarado.
Good. I have the, left the printout sitting on my desk, because, you know, we were coming to dinner.
You keep them down here, we'll take a picture with the board.
So, third place, we had Elliot. I don't see any of my friends here. Elliot Harpstra. Second place, Gabriella Haynes. And first place, Timothy Jones, and he is ready. Like, he is ready. And when, when it was announced this was gonna happen, he was high-fiving, "This bruiser, I got this," the whole week. And then, when he won, it was like ecstatic. So, he's ready to showdown next week on February 1st. Either of my friends are here, but they are excited.
Board, I'm gonna go over here and take a picture with them. Let's do Patterson or Delaney, you're right here, so we'll go Delaney first, and then we'll go Patterson.
Well.
All right, Patterson. Organizing us, that's good.
Oh, okay.
They covered all the angles.
We got four, four three to stay here. One more picture. We're gonna get a board appreciation.
No more pictures.
Okay, 5C, still on you, Mr. G.
B.
5B, okay.
Okay, so, every year in January, we do the board appreciation. Governor Abbott comes out with a proclamation, so I will read Governor Abbott's proclamation for school boards. So, State of Texas offers to the governor, "As a nation, as a nation always looking toward the future, we are continuously challenged to ensure that young Americans are empowered with the diligence, skills, and responsibility necessary to see that the challenge is before them. It is through equality education that we place students firmly on the path to a lifetime of excellence and achievement. This has been the mission of educators and administrators throughout our state. Ensuring an excellent education is the work of many, and local school boards collaborate with teachers, parents, and stakeholders to promote state and national standards in a way that reflect the community's values. By so doing, they inspire a lifelong learning, love of learning for the next generation of Texas leaders. At this, at this time, I encourage all Texans to celebrate the more than 7,000 school board members across the Lone Star State. Their commitment to education and their communities represent the best of Texas, and they will have a key role to play as we strive to secure the future of the Lone Star State. Therefore, I, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, do hereby proclaim January 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month. In Texas, and urge all Texans to observe the occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. In testimony, whereof, I have herein to affix my signature the second day of November 2023." Governor Greg Abbott.
Thank you.
And to recognize that, we have some placards, so if you pass that down to Ms. V. Gomez, Ms. Moody. Mr. Glovier.
Thank you.
Archie Douglas. Mr. Serta. Mrs. Cruz Perez. And Mr. Owens. Thank you all for all you do. We, like I said, had a wonderful meal earlier, you know, to celebrate you all. And this is just another little recognition for you all. So, thank you for all you do, for all you do for our students and for our community. And, like I said earlier, it's a thankless job, and you get paid so well to do it, but, you know, keep showing up, and that's a, that's a testimony to you all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I must say so, I think we do have one of the best boards, if not the best board, in the state of Texas. Thank you all for all of your hard work and effort. 5C, back to you, Mr. G.
I will say this, I think we also have one of the most well-trained boards. You know, we've, y'all have done a lot of hours of, that shows your, your commitment to what you do, and that's, that's another testimony to your dedication to it. So, you've all received a lot of hours for your training. All right, so now we are going to see, right?
Yes, 5C, please.
5C, DePaul Ward, so this is our employee recognition. So, from Delaney, we have Claudia Gonzalez, Darren Lumen, Kelsey Matthews, Lacey Hay, Terry Allen, and Lenny Kilpatrick George. At Central Administration Office, we have Tracy Gray, Dr. Toya Keys, DeeDee Grimes, Andrea Moreau, and Lori Hummiston. At Kennedale Junior High School, we have Charity Simmons has two, Christopher Hartsfield has two. At Kennedale High School, Patty Bostad and Chef Bowles. And I believe that is... Yep, that's it for our hallways. Sorry about computers, halfway between screens.
Okay, then we will move on to Section 6, which is the Consent Agenda. So, all items listed under the subheading, under this subheading, will be adopted with one motion. Now, let's start, remove from the consent agenda by a trustee for discussion.
I move to approve all items under the consent agenda.
Moved by Mr. Glovier.
Second.
Second by Dr. Maria Douglas. All in favor in adopting the consent agenda, let it be known by I.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. We will now go to Section 7, which is our information sections. 7A, we'll start with Special Student Services Department update.
Ms. Rawls will come and give that report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Put this down a little bit because I'm short. I'm Monica Rawls, Director of Special Student Services, and today I'm gonna go ahead and get, give a program evaluation update, let you know where we are with our, the departments that we serve. Introduce myself. So, Special Student Services includes our students who receive accommodations and supports through Section 504, special education, and dyslexia. So, just going into the makeup of these populations, looking at what is Section 504. Section 504 is part of a longstanding law. It's the Americans with Disabilities Act, and it's looking at how we provide access to individuals with disabilities. So, who does the Section 504 protect in the school setting? It would protect any students who have been identified with a disability and require accommodations or supports in order to be, to level the playing field, giving them the opportunities of typical individuals without disabilities. And what does the Section 504 plan include? Would include accommodations, like I mentioned a while ago, accommodations to help level that playing field, making sure that we're giving all individuals equal access to education opportunities and as well as around the school settings. Looking at our, our, our numbers over the past three years, we have started to notice a decline in our student population in Section 504. There have been quite a few updates to some of the other areas such as dyslexia and special education that I'm gonna talk about in just a minute, that we're, you will be able to see the connection and to where this decline is coming from. Currently, in Kennedale I S D, we have 275 students across the district who receive 504 accommodations, have a plan in place. So, right now, that, that is a 12% decline in numbers over the past three years. So, why are we decreasing? What's, what's happening that's making those numbers decrease? One of the, I would say, the biggest updates is to dyslexia. In 2021, there were, the Dyslexia Handbook was updated to include just changes in evaluation, how we're identifying students with disabilities, I'm sorry, with dyslexia. Dyslexia is by definition a, a learning disability in the area of reading and impacts language as well. And so, with that 2021 update, we started doing our dyslexia evaluations through the special education referral process. This summer, House Bill 3928 came out, and they actually revamped all of the dyslexia protocols to include how students are served as well. And so, there's also another update to the handbook coming soon as well, so it's just gonna keep on evolving. Right now, the evaluation implications include, like I mentioned, all dyslexia evaluations must go through a special education referral. There, there is not that option of going either way, 504 or sped. It's all through special education. Students who are already served in 504 at their annual plan meetings, the committees are looking at what their needs currently are. Are they still requiring direct instruction for dyslexia? Or are they able to access the curriculum through the accommodations, access their learning through accommodations? As they have those meetings, they are, I talked about this, as they're having those meetings, they are determining if the student is still requiring that direct instruction, do we need to go ahead and look at a special ed referral at this time? And so, the new House Bill has actually laid out that dyslexia falls under a learning disability, that's definition, and direct dyslexia instruction is specialized. And students in special education received specially-designed instruction. So, now, dyslexia instruction is considered S D I, which follows under special education. Future implication, implications, as we're seeing, and I'm sorry, I got braces in the last month and it makes me talk funny. We are seeing the number of evaluations increase in special education, and a lot of it is due to this new House Bill and having to relook at every student who receives dyslexia services to identify if a referral to special education is needed. That means that we're gonna see an increase in our numbers in special education. And so, Dyslexia and Dysgraphia Handbook is in the process of a 2024 update. So, even though we've had a 2021 update, we had this House Bill 3928 come out, more updates are coming. Okay, so how are we gonna address these requirements? Like I mentioned a minute ago, students currently served through 504 are, we are looking at their plans very closely and determining if we need to move forward with evaluations. If so, we are doing special education referrals, and the students will continue to receive their dyslexia instruction under 504 while we're evaluating. So, we're not pulling services away from kids. We're not saying, "Nope, we're not gonna..." Until we test you, they are continuing their services while we're doing that evaluation. And then, like we said, if they, if the committee has said, you know, accommodations are what we need and we don't need to do that direct, then they can stay in 504 with those accommodations only. Okay. Our dyslexia identification rate has been pretty stable. We haven't seen a significant increase or decrease since that 2021 update, moving our dyslexia evaluations under diagnoses under the special education referral. So, that's a good thing. That means our evaluation practices are, are solid. We're looking at students for dyslexia consistently across the board, all, all levels. And so, our, just having that consistent student count in that area helps. Our special edu-, special education population now is where we're gonna see the growth. We saw the, the dip in 504, see the growth in special education. Over the past three years, since 2021, we went from a overall student population of 257 students in special education. Currently, we have 363. So, we did increase by 106 students. That's a 41% increase over three years. Looking at our, we have 13 categories of disabilities. The highest three growing disability categories are what I wanted to, wanted us to look at tonight. The first one being our specific learning disability category, which is where our dyslexia falls. That population has increased 106% over the past three years. We went from 2021 having 64 students identified as having learning disabilities to currently 132. Then, our next population would be our emotional disturbance. We had a 91% increase in students identified with emotional disturbance over the past three years. And then, also the intellectual disability. Our students with intellectual disabilities primarily, we do see several of those students being served in our essential academics classrooms. And so, those classrooms are increasing pretty rapidly. Not all students with intellectual disabilities are served in that, in that setting. There's many students who do, are served in general population with resource and other services. But we are seeing an increase in, in the class sizes of our essential academics classes.
So, I'm gonna ask a question.
Yes.
With the 504, you wouldn't expect to see an increase in the E D population? So, where's that population growth coming from?
The population growth for E D, I, I will say that just what we've, what we've looked at as far as, not specifically in the district, but just, just research from around the area, from around the state, we, we're seeing, and so, the, the two in the state are E D and autism, emotional disturbance and autism. Ours happens to be the emotional disturbance. Really, a lot of coming off the pandemic and the missed opportunities for social interaction and learning those social skills and appropriate behaviors in, in social situations.
I, I think also move, we're having a lot.
We do. We've had a very, a high number of transfer students and a high number of students with emotional disturbance transfer into, into our schools, as well as intellectual disability this year.
Maybe I'm not understanding it correctly, but if, if we've had this big of an increase over the last two years, then why are the 504 numbers going down?
Because the inverse of one another. They've been moved into sped.
So, the ones that were 504 for dyslexia pretty much switched over to learn disability.
I guess I was thinking that 504 was still your...
Yeah, so, exactly, exactly that. So, prior to these last few years, dyslexia has always been seen separate. And not, although it has its definition as a learning disability, it's just always been separate and not, not special ed. And that was just legislation that had that in place. And so, now that, and, and honestly, Texas was one of the only states that, that defined it that way.
Right.
Everywhere else, dyslexia is learning disability where does a student serve. And so, we are now catching up with, it's a learning disability. Direct dyslexia instruction is very specialized. It's, it's targeted to meet very specific skill deficits. And so, as we're reducing our 504, 504 numbers are going down, and we're testing those students, and they truly are identified with dyslexia, it's picking up in our sped. That's, that's where the learning disability increased. And then, I wanted to highlight the other two because those are, those are two other disabilities that are just, that are, they're impacting our, our settings and our, in our classrooms. And so, I wanted to show the top three, even though I can pinpoint the learning disability coming out of.
I think another factor that we need to address is the, a few years back, the state of Texas got in trouble for having a cap at 8.5%.
Yeah.
Referrals for special ed have gone up since that time.
Yes, and we're currently, my last, when I last looked at our data, we were, which was like the last, just earlier this week, actually, it was 12.8% special education. And with, with this dyslexia House Bill, I, I do anticipate that it's gonna grow.
That's it, yeah. That was gonna be my next.
We're gonna continue to grow in special ed.
So, would you say that 50% of the S L D, or maybe 60% is because of reading, and the rest is pretty much math, or is it like 50/50?
There, we'd have to look at it because there's different, there's a breakdown. Within the learning disability category, you have basic reading, reading fluency, reading comprehension, math problem-solving, math calculations, written expression. So, there's, there's a whole lot of factors that, that go into that. Some of the students that may have been identified with dyslexia, maybe are not truly, are identified as having dyslexia now but have learning disabilities in any combination of those categories. We could, we could get that information.
I just wondered off the top.
Yeah. I would say a majority are gonna be in reading.
Because of the reading and literacy to combine.
I think that that's just what we see the most, and then impacts on, if we have dyslexia, a lot of times, our writing is impacted.
So, when you go back to the bar chart before, yes, do you have, so you have the learned disabilities, E D and I D. Are there, is there, were they overlap? Or are we seeing?
These, these rarely overlap. S L D and E D very rarely overlap. There's, and, and if you have an emotional disturbance as your primary disability, you cannot have a learning disability.
Gotcha.
If, but if you were identified as having a learning disability and had trauma or some factor that then caused you to later be evaluated and identified with emotional disturbance, sometimes that can stay. So, there's some, a lot, these are categories that are not typically going to overlap. Learning disability and intellectual disability won't ever overlap. Any, any other questions on this slide?
So, if we were to add our S L D, E D, and I D together and take a look at where we were three years ago and where we are now as a group, are we higher or are we lower?
Oh, definitely higher. Definitely.
And definitely higher would be roughly how much? And I might have missed that, and maybe my, my math didn't get it right.
Well, our learning disabilities, we have 68 more students, emotional disturbance 21, and intellectual 13, so... It's 102.
So, we lost, you said one, was it 113 that got lost, that switched out from, okay, I'm gonna go back to the 504. So, this is dyslexia count was 175.
And some of those students in the dyslexia account are still under 504 because they're currently being evaluated. So, those aren't gonna match.
That was my confusion. I was like, wait, the difference in these numbers.
Right, no, they're not.
I understand the House Bill and why it would have, that's where my, I was...
And so, what, what's happening now over the course of this year, we're having annual 504 meetings and saying, "Does the student continue to need direct dyslexia instruction? If the answer is yes, then we're rolling into a special ed referral." And so, at any, those meetings happen throughout the year. So, and we have until the end of next year to have everything switched over.
That's what I was thinking.
So, we're still in that process of evaluation, and then, and then having those students moved into I E Ps if they meet that criteria.
That makes sense now, thanks.
You wanted to know if they'd increased.
Well, I can tell by the white chart that it increased as we were there.
Yeah.
That 102 students?
102 students, it's 85%.
What was the percentage?
85% increase.
85%, that's what I was looking for.
Maybe bust out my calculator.
So, it's 85% of our population?
Yep. No, 85% increase.
Increase, oh.
From 2122 school year to the 2324 school year, over the last three years.
Yes.
Pretty substantial.
Yes, very.
I will say, one thing Mr. T usually says is COVID, COVID, COVID. But in this instance, COVID really plays a part, especially with the E D population. Like you said, social skills.
Yes.
If you're at home on a computer all day, which they had to because we didn't have any other choice.
You didn't have any other option, right.
But you're not learning how to interact. So, when you come to a setting with real people that are on the computer screen. So when you come to a setting with real people that are on the computer screen.
Having to start all over with those skills.
From scratch.
Right.
And then if you have anything else on top of that at home, then our numbers are.
Absolutely. Yes, and.
It's a lot of kids, but we just have to.
It's a lot of kids, but it's reality, that's what's happening, you know?
We do offer a continuum of services for our students in special education. So we, we always consider our least restrictive environment, meaning that they're in the general education setting. As it goes into more restrictive settings, our next typical thought would, is to look at the regular classroom with accommodations or modifications. We typically would serve this through inclusion support, can be special education paras, intervention paras, teach, special ed teachers, providing it inside a general ed classroom. We offer pullout opportunities through our resource settings as well as our dyslexia instruction, speech related services. We do have separate classroom settings where our students are not spending very much time, some none, some very minimal time with students without disabilities and that, that's probably our most restrictive in the school setting before you start looking at separate school and home options or residential. So we, we do look at all of our students individually to make their plans and so students can fall anywhere on this continuum, not based on their disability, but based on their need. So I do want to talk to you about our results driven accountability report, which looks at compliance, monitors compliance as well as academic readiness, post-secondary outcomes. And so, and as well as disproportionate analysis in various categories. And what we're gonna be looking at is our performance level. The performance level is really what is going to be, it, it's how the state determines what our area of need, how we're, how we are performing. Very first thing we'll look at is our state performance plan compliance areas, which is our SPPs eleven, twelve and thirteen. SPP eleven is our child find. It's all of our initial evaluations this year. TEA broke it down into two, broke it down into A and B. A is our evaluations where they completed within our required timelines, which is forty five school days, reports written, all of it completed. And then B is, did we have our ARD meetings and make placement decisions within another thirty calendar days? And so as you can see, we did get a hundred percent compliance. These are a hundred percent compliance areas. So we have to be at a hundred percent to be considered compliant. SPP twelve is the same, it's the same as far as it's child find and it's students who we receive referrals through ECI. So kids who are two turning three. And these kids have to have their ARD meeting and their plan developed by their third birthday. So before they even turn three. And then SPP thirteen is our transition and post-secondary goals. Did we put together a transition plan for students in order to plan for life after high school? And so that was also a hundred percent. So we did really, really great in those categories. So woo hoo, that was for Dr. Boo. The next, and so this is just a breakdown currently, so you can see where we are currently with SPP eleven, our current initial evaluation count. At the elementary campus level, our diagnosticians and speech pathologists are evaluating sixty one students right now in progress. These are the kids they have consent on. We're already going on those, secondary is thirty seven. Students, our preschool population, these are not our ECI referrals. This is just students who they're three years old, four years old, they're at home and mom says, I think that I have concerns about A, B or C. So we test those babies, we have fourteen currently, and then homeschool and private school students, if a student is being homeschooled. Or if they go to a private school that is within our boundaries, we are obligated to evaluate if there is a disability suspected. So we currently have three students there. Our SPPs twelve count, which is our current preschool through ECI, we have six in progress. So currently our evaluation staff is evaluating, now this is initial evaluations only, this doesn't count the reevaluations. And it doesn't count referrals that maybe they haven't gotten consent on. We currently have a hundred and fifteen evaluations that are going on right now. Also to say, we just finished our dyslexia screeners, so. Once, after the dyslexia screeners, there are things that, that our MTSS teams are gonna look at and determine if those students should then be evaluated. So that could add to that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So we provide the evaluation for homeschool and private school?
Yes.
Do we provide the services as well?
Yes. Homeschool, private school students are provided services through a service plan agreement. It is similar to the IEP and that they get certain services. We meet with private school and homeschool parents in the, in the summer to look at what are the services that they are seeking. Typically it's speech therapy. That's what our current service plan agreements serve is speech therapy. So private, private school, homeschool kids may receive speech services during the school year if they meet that criteria.
Through, through our.
But we do evaluate for any disability that there's a suspicion of, but the service plan would be only for speech. So looking at academic readiness, first we're gonna look at our three through eight star data. Performance level zero is where you, where we wanna be. Performance, that means we're doing great, we're doing outstanding, performance level one. What, you know, we just, you're good, but we have some things we need to work on, performance level two. Gotta start monitoring some things and performance level three and four are not doing well. And so from our star data, three through eight, in math, reading, reading, language arts, science and social studies, as you can see, last year's star data for students in special education was, was not great. We were performance level three in all of those areas. In our, oh, sorry.
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just out of curiosity, I'm sure you do, because everyone's so good at data. But I wonder if there's correlation with when some of these kids get pulled out? If it's like when a certain subject is being taught in the classroom?
So our campus administrators and our art committees are really, really good about making sure that if students are being pulled out during any core instruction time, there would be a significant need and significant gaps to close that gap. Cause I know they really tried to keep the kiddos in that gen ed setting.
I just, I'm saying, since social studies is the lowest one, it probably wouldn't necessarily be like the next one. It's not your math and your, so, but if it's social studies, then I don't know.
That is possible. Another, my thought too is that the reading component within the social studies test. So there, and.
I was just curious, cause I know sometimes.
Something we can look at to just analyze in the future.
Or even just if it's like, you know, for this, for this month, we'll pull out in the morning and for the next month we'll pull out, I don't know.
See if that changes.
Just to mix up when pullout is, I don't know.
That's definitely something that we can just, we can look at and see, you know, when that pullout's happening at the various, at the various campuses. Our EOC scores, algebra actually improved and went to a level two, so that's, that's good. Still wanna keep it going. Biology is a performance level of three, which that, that goes to that science again. U S history was a zero, so that was great. We, we met what, what is expected and oh my God, English one and two. So I will say, and the RI means that we made significant improvement. So, you know, great job to the high school staff, there, the teachers, the teams there are really working hard. And not that our elementaries and junior high aren't, but we really saw a big, a jump in those two categories, so. Yes, they were PL four, English one and two before. So they did great. We do have a really strong plan for improvement and it's already been, starting to be implemented. So starting last school year, about mid-year, we implemented, we started implementing a whole lot of curriculum through special education. So this year went a little bit in, more into that, more trainings. And so we are doing, in our LA, this is just a few of, these are just some of the, the, the reading and language arts type of programming and curriculum that we're adding to those special ed classrooms in addition to what they receive in the gen ed environment. And then in math, we've also put in place a couple of curriculum pieces here as well, our touch math and one, math one eighty. So, and the campus administrators, you know, doing a really great job of monitoring the, making sure that these are being implemented with fidelity in the classrooms. And so now that these things are in place and we've been rolling with them, you know, I'm hoping that we, we are gonna see an increase in, in scores this coming year. We're also looking at making sure that, you know, we have ongoing meetings and reminders and our case managers do a really great job of just ongoing progress monitoring of their students, making individualized decisions at art meetings. And it just systematic master scheduling, making sure that we have the right supports in the right classes when we have an inclusion set, student, the inclusion in their, in their services, making sure that we have su- support there. And then of course, ongoing curriculum and IEP best practice training. As part of that, I started doing a monthly newsletter to the special ed teachers and the special ed staff, separate from the, the all staff one, so it can target certain things. In addition to our nine, every nine weeks, we do have a face-to-face meeting so that we can keep that ongoing communication. And then our coordinator and lead diagnostician are also out at campuses a lot, working with teachers when they need help, when they have, need ideas and, and helping in that way as well. Okay, post-secondary readiness, which is looking at just preparing for graduation and life after high school. And so our current graduation rate is ninety three point six, so we're at a PL zero, which is great. And our current dropout rate is also at a PL zero. So doing really good there, really keeping our kids in school so that we can make sure that they graduate and become successful. Disproportionate analysis, last year I stood in front of you and told you, we're year three, significantly disproportionate in African-American discipline. This year we're performance level one. So we've made great strides, we are no longer considered significantly disproportionate. So we still have to continue to monitor, it, it's a three-year moni- three-year monitor, monitoring cycle. This is year two, so next year we'll continue to do the monitoring and, and all of that to make sure that we can remain at this level, if not improve even more so, but we are on the right track there. And so to wrap that up with just, I think this is just very fitting for the last slide, is understanding why a kid is challenging is the first and most important part of helping them. So not just that they are having challenges, but why, so that we can meet them where they're at and help to build that. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, just one thing.
Yes, sir.
One bit of information that, I know you don't have it tonight, because you didn't have it before your presentation. But when you were talking about, you know, five oh four numbers that are, you know, are changing and they, I am curious though, what is the impact on each campus?
I can look at each campus separately.
So if you could possibly share that with me?
Absolutely.
I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, absolutely, I'll get that information to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roll.
Awesome, okay. And now we are to section seven B, the MAP growth reports by campus.
Given by Dr. Boo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to provide a snapshot, snapshot of our middle of the year MAP growth data. I have shared a folder with you that has all of the reports so that you can look and you can study and you can review and of course ask questions. But the presentation tonight is going to focus on key metrics that are, that will just provide an overview of how we're doing as a district. We have a few hotspots, but overall we're doing, we're making great progress. It's, so we have a lot to celebrate. So just to review, MAP, MAP growth is an adaptive assessment. Our students take it three times a year. It really focuses on growth over time. And we take it, starting beginning in kindergarten all the way through high school. So one piece of data that I'm going to share with you tonight that is something new and is exciting for us. We have finally gotten to the place in Kennedale where we have what I call clean data, two years in a row. So we found, as some of you remember, that in two thousand and twenty, kindergarten parents often scored better on the MAP tests at home than their students did in school. I had a kindergarten student that time, so I can tell you. So we've had some, we've had, we've had some challenges, being able to look at our data and saying, this is clean. We know that this is indicative of how our students are performing over time. But last year, we had a solid rollout. I'm confident in the test security. And so what I'm going to be moving to and what I'm going to highlight in some instances tonight is our national percentile rank. I know that you are familiar with this, but just as a quick reminder, one really neat thing about MAP is that it provides a national percentile rank. So we're able to see how our students are performing over time. We're able to look at growth, but also we're able to see how our students compare to students across the nation. And it's been really helpful in talks with staff and talks with parents because, you know, sometimes parents will come in and say, oh, my, my student is struggling and they, they aren't doing well. And you can look at the national percentile rank and say, your student's at the sixtieth percentile. That means your student is well above average. And that's been, I've seen some light bulb moments in, in that particular case. And so what I like about it as well is that it, it calculates the achievement, but it also includes growth. So for example, if I am in first grade and I take the beginning of the year MAP growth assessment and I get a RIT score of, let's say, a hundred. So my projected growth, if I'm making a year's worth of progress, and I'm making up these numbers, but would be if I took it in the middle of the year, I got a one twenty five. So I take it at the beginning of the year, I get a hundred, so I'm fiftieth percentile. I take it in the middle of the year, I get a one twenty five, I'm still fiftieth percentile. Because fiftieth percentile in the middle of the year for that particular RIT score is going to be higher than it would be at the beginning of the year. That matters, so, because you can compare, well, where did you rank nationally at the beginning versus the middle versus the end? And it allows us to look at both achievement and growth at the same time. So it's nice because it streamlines the process. And growth is important, absolutely, growth drives achievement. But sometimes, you know, if a student comes in and they, they take a BOY and they're fifteenth percentile, well, then they take it in the MOY and they're at the seventeenth percentile. They've absolutely made growth, but we still want to make sure that we are accelerating their learning, which is the point of, you know, our win time and we have our accelerated instructional plan. So it's important to look at the achievement piece as well as the growth piece. And so that's something I'm going to be highlighting tonight. So we set our growth goals. This is something that many districts across the metroplex are using MAP growth and this is something that other districts are doing as well. So saying we wanna hit about fifty percent, and it just gives you a metric so that you can look at it over time. So we're gonna start with math by grade level. So our kindergarten knocked it out of the park this year. That's the first data point. Our kindergarten students come in and they are well above average in math. And we exceeded our growth goal for, for math here. First grade, it's one of our hotspots that we'll discuss, but we're close to the goal in terms of percentage of growth. Second grade, so this is an example, forty two percent to forty two percent. They're still growing because this is the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. And beginning in third grade, I did something a little bit different. I have the achievement predictions late, in later slides. But I wanted to look at the projected proficiency for the students who will be taking the star. So we've talked a lot about approaches, which is passing on the star. But for federal accountability and just for our goals for our students, we want them to be achieving at grade level expectation. So what I've done here is you can see, so last year in third grade, we had twenty six point eight of our students who met expectations or projected to meet expectations on the STAR test later in the year. This year we're up thirty three percent. And more than half of our students met the goal. So third grade's doing well. Fourth grade, we still saw a jump. Also, we, we're out of greens, we're above fifty percent. Fifth grade, we saw a jump. That's a place where we're looking at it and you'll see it come up later, they're not making the projected amount of growth. So first grade math is a hotspot, there are some fifth grade areas as well. And that's part of where the campus action plans are going to come into play. So you can see what they're doing at individual campuses. So we saw a growth in sixth grade. We saw a growth in seventh grade, more than half of our. We saw a growth in seventh grade, more than half are meeting their expectations. We saw a big jump in eighth grade, near the goal there. And so I, I brought your favorite graph, I know that you like this. This one's really neat. So because we have clean data from twenty-two, twenty-three, you can look at it and you can see that students who were with us last year and have been with us in the spring all the way to this winter, so one full year, all but first grade and fifth grade, they're meeting their growth goal or exceeding their growth go, goal. So this is a really neat graph because it's showing that our students are growing. This is my favorite graph. So when you do a cohort comparison, so this goes back to the national percentile ranking. When you look at last year's kindergarteners, now I said first grade is a hotspot. But other than first grade and fifth grade, every single grade level in math made progress. Nationally, our students in many areas are doing, are performing well above average. So what's helpful about a metric like this is that it allows us to account for the summer slide. Sometimes students will, you know, over the summer, some students have a lot of enriching experiences and some students don't. And so sometimes the BOI isn't necessarily indicative of how the student performed on the end-of-year assessment the previous year. In addition to that, it allows us to look at the efficacy of our entire system. So we're not individually looking at a teacher team or grade level. We're looking at how is our system supporting student learning? It's, it's looking very closely at the curriculum as well. So do we have alignment? Do we have rigor? Do we have, do we have instructional strategies that are supporting student learning? So in reading, again, we saw a big jump. So fifty-nine percent to fifty-nine percent is good, they're meeting their growth goal. So fifty-nine to sixty-six is out of this world amazing. So we want to applaud kindergarten, they did a great job. And then we're at blue. First grade, another hotspot there, not quite at our goal in that particular area. Second grade, we want to be closer to fifty, but we did see progress. So our second grade teachers are supporting student learning. So third grade, again, I jumped to the projected proficiency so that we could compare that to the last year and we can kind of have an idea of how these students may perform on the end-of-year state exam. So twenty-nine percent is how third grade performed last year and they're up to thirty-five percent this year. And so if you'll notice, you can see a pretty strong correlation between these charts as well as the growth charts, the, the one with the bar graph and the gold diamonds. Fourth grade, we saw a jump. Fifth grade, another hotspot, we saw a slight, slight decline and our students aren't making as much progress. Fifth grade, we saw a jump. Seventh grade, slight dip. Eighth grade, significant jump, jump as well. We still want to get closer to fifty percent for the students meeting their growth goals. And so here you can see, winter to winter in reading, all but fifth grade and seventh grade exceeded. So that we're looking, oh, excuse me, that's the next graph. So we see growth in all but fifth and eighth, which correlates with this graph where in all but fifth and eighth, you can see that they outperformed the previous year. So the first grade is last year's kindergarteners and then you can compare it to this year's first graders and it goes all the way up. So this is the part where we highlight ninth and tenth grade. That's amazing, they're doing great work in our ELA classes, so we want to applaud them. Language and use is the grammar mechanics type questions, revising and editing in many cases. So the reading test typically has both of these, but in MAP growth, it separates them into two separate tests. So you can see, we have, so we have some work to do in sixth grade, but our students are making at, they're making their projected progress or more than that. So for language usage, all but sixth grade outperformed last year, so they are growing. So in science, fifth grade, they're about the same, but there is a very small increase, which is, means they're making their projected growth measures. We're at green there. We saw a slight increase in eighth grade. And then here you can see all of the grade levels that took that particular test. Sixth grade is a hotspot for us. We want to look at sixth grade and find out what's happening there. So one of the things that's included in the action plan, and I'll tell you, I have met with each individual principal, we've looked at individual campus data. Each principal has provided an action plan for you so that you can see what's happening on each campus, at each grade level. As I mentioned, this is a high-level overview, but we need to look at sixth grade, first grade.
I have a question. Are these numbers also including, for example, if a student scores really highly and they have like hardly any growth, would that be?
No.
Oh, okay.
It also doesn't account for students who are enrolled in Canadale but don't come to school. So attendance issues. That is something that you can't capture in this, but it's something, so if you have a student who, they take the beginning-of-the-year reading test, they're in the ninety-ninth percentile. So they're already doing better than ninety-nine percent of students across the nation. They take it in the middle of the year and they're at ninety-eight and it shows that they're at the low growth on the quadrant, which I'll say that, not the ninety-nine necessarily. But my son experienced that, so I really pumped him up. You're going to look at growth and it's going to, it's going to be amazing. And he went in, his growth, it, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was in the low quadrant and he was so sad and I felt like that was a parenting problem.
That's why I was asking. And so I know that it's, of course, everyone always wants to see growth and on campuses, we say, well, you know, everyone's goal is to grow by this much. And so I was just wondering if that was accounted for in these numbers for averages?
No, it's not in this particular one.
It's just on people that you're trying to target at.
It includes them. So for example, when you see a diamond like this, we'll, it's in the sixth grade, we'll just say. It's possible that all of our sixth graders were scoring ninety-seventh percentile, ninety-eighth percentile. That didn't happen, but it's possible that that could have happened. And then we could have a graph look like that where they went from ninety-eight to ninety-seven. There's still high-performing.
Right.
Students, but they didn't make the growth. And so that's one of the things, there's not a perfect test and that's why it's important for individual teachers to look at individual students. But of course, we want to encourage students to set goals and to.
Yeah.
Strive for growth. But it's not always going to happen for our students who are at our, who are already in the highest quadrant.
I was just curious because I know that, that, that is a factor.
You're right. And it's something I've thought a lot about and I've spoken with principals about as well.
Not to say it's all of them, but it is a factor for some.
It is. It is. So in science, we saw growth in all but sixth grade. So you can kind of see how the growth graph correlates with the achievement graph because growth drives achievement. And this is the piece where, you know, we start with kindergarten and we work all the way up. In high school, we've talked about this in previous years, it's not always, MAP growth isn't taken by all the students like it is at every other campus. And so I've included some additional data. Here is a PSAT, SAT cohort comparison. So we have our ninth and tenth grade, but you can see a little bit about how eleventh and twelfth grade are doing. So last year's juniors took the PSAT with a mean score of nine oh eight. Oh, this happens all the time. It was beautiful, I checked it. So if you look at nine, several times, we did, we really checked it. So nine oh eight to nine eighty-six. So you can see that the mean score from eleventh grade to twelfth grade went up, that's the arrow. There are boxes that have beautiful animations that you can't see. And then if you look at, oh goodness. And I do these boxes. Hold on, this is going to work for us. Okay, and then you can see as well, twenty-two, twenty-three. So in each, in each cohort, we're seeing growth over the years. So what we're doing is working, we just have to stay the course. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Do these numbers capture every nuance within the data for individual students? Absolutely not, but we are giving a nice snapshot of what's happening in our district and that's the overall goal here. It worked the second time. So that's what I'll do from now on, I'll just go back and forth until, until my animations come back. So in this one, this is our PSAT, SAT performance, the national rankings, or compared nationally. So what you'll see is at KHS, we're well above the national mean for SAT. We're working on PSAT. So that's one of our areas of focus as well. So what are we doing to prepare our students after they finish taking MAP growth in tenth grade? And then I want to point this out, so this is TSI, this is an area of focus for us too. It, it doesn't look like it's great, but it's great. Because the, on the far left, it is last year's data. So last year, in terms of the students who met the standard for TSI math for the whole year, twenty-nine. This year, end of first semester, twenty-eight. Most students take it in the spring. So we're, we're well on track to do very well this year. So we don't have our final data set and we won't until the end of this spring, but it's looking good. So each of you have an action plan from the individual campus principals. You've had an opportunity to look those over. At this time, you can ask individual principals questions. Next month, each principal is going to do a very brief presentation on the implementation of their plan. So instead of standing up tonight and telling you what they're going to do, next month, they're going to stand up and say, these are the things we've been doing and here's how it's going. So what questions do you have? For me, for the principals?
No questions here.
Great presentation. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very nice.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for the principals? Does this, a sit-down, it's eight twenty-two. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boon. Very good. Okay, that will take us to section eight of our meeting. That, these are the business items that are requiring action by our board. And we'll start with section eight A, which is discussed and consider approved, the third phase of approved to James A. Arthur Early Childhood Center.
So Mr. Gabbal, we'll leave this report. I will take you back to when we took the tour, when we were first opening Arthur back in August. And I pointed out that, you know, we originally were in a phase, that project in phase one, phase two, phase three. But we actually handled phase one and phase two, this is phase three, so.
Yeah, I think we've, we've spoken about it. We, you guys made a big investment in that campus. And I think our focus was so heavy on making that a really inviting early childhood center. We had a few water leaks we had to deal with, but we got so focused on that. And we were trying to be sensitive, I think, to your, your operating budget. We, in retrospect, not retrospect, but I think after looking at it, we identified some things around the campus that I think could contribute, could continue to contribute to an inviting environment for that campus. And so we're, we've looked at the back of the campus specifically and Ms. Mo's been kind enough to put together a little summary here of some photos that I think will give you an idea of some of the challenges and you're probably aware of some of those. Brian, are you in control or do I need to hit the arrow here?
Go toward.
All right. So again, we've done a lot to change just the, the curb appeal as well as the inside spaces. And so as we go through these things, you guys are probably aware primarily with the, the erosion that's going on behind the campus. You get a lot of water coming off the roof, a lot of water coming off the flatwork. And over the years, it's just, it's created, in some places, frankly, a hazardous situation with the flatwork, the erosion, the deterioration of the concrete. And you can see the benches that were once nice and flush with the ground, the concrete's been exposed with the, the years of erosion. We've also begun to see some yield. I don't think we're at the point of catastrophic, but the retaining wall back there has buckled, it's bowing out a little bit, it's unsightly, it's, it's put a little bow in the fence and everything else. So we'd like to address that as well. And just general erosion and with that slope, when we talk about some of the work that we want to do on that play area out there, frankly, you've got some accessibility challenges there. There's really only one way to get down to that space. And it's not really compliant. We can get down to the playscape, but getting out to the place lab and the general play area, there really isn't an accessible route for any, any student or teacher or parent that's challenged in terms of mobility. And so we're going to tie that little magic stem of sidewalk there back to a more comprehensive, revised retaining and access ramp. And so we've, we've asked Huckabee's civil to go through and survey that. Because if you, if you remember, up between the buildings, water's not coming out from between the buildings very well. I think the district maintenance guys have done a pretty good job of trenching where they can, but there's an area drain there. It's, it's, water's really not getting to it as it should. They carries water down, believe it or not, down that hill and back to that far corner of the playscape or the place lab you're looking at there. So what we're wanting to do is dress up that place lab, provide access down to that and the green space, shore up your retaining wall and improve the overall drainage down there. Look, appeal, accessibility and safety altogether. And so with that survey and with the help of Huckabee on some design options, we've come up with a scope of work. And I think you've got a summary of that budget in your handout. What we're asking for tonight is authorization to move forward with the design. We've given you a budget in there just shy of a half a million dollars. Between fund balance, bake sales and Ms. West's magic, I think we've got the money to do that. But we're, before we move forward with the design, ultimately bid it and come back to you with a hard price, we want to make sure you're okay with us moving forward with this.
That means it's an action item.
It is an action item, we want your permission before we go out there, yes, sir.
This is a phase three, right? This is something that we, we wanted to do.
Absolutely. We, we've talked about it along the way, just not specifically, and you guys haven't had the opportunity to see any specific numbers or scope of work. Obviously with, much like we've done with everything else, we've got a sort of an overall layout, I think it's in your package, but you don't get a lot of data from that. But as we get into the design, we'll come back to you and kind of present that to you, so you'll see exactly what we're doing back there. But it's all, we've been talking about it now for a couple of years.
The inside's beautiful.
So my only question is, you mentioned that this was fund balanced, this is not coming out of the bond?
It's not coming out of bond. Now, if you want to be optimistic and you want to consider it your next agenda, a resolution to reimburse, and we get to the end, we saved a bunch of money, you can, you can certainly do that.
This estimate that we got, is it going to be changing or is it a? Right, it always changes and it never changes to the left.
There's a, there's a twenty-five percent contingency here too, so.
Right, I mean, after that, do we, or we're, that should be what we're looking at.
We were pretty conservative in our guestimates on this thing, I think we're okay. We've had input, we've looked at it, Huckabee's looked at it and their civils looked at it. The big nut in the thing, if you look at it, pardon my French, is the retaining wall. That's a huge structure to demo and replace and maintain the integrity of that back slope. That's the biggest cost of all of this.
I mean, we invested so much on the inside, I mean, we shouldn't invest on the outside as well.
That retaining wall has been there since I had hair on top and attended it myself. So let's just be very clear, probably mid-nineties.
Ish, yeah.
If I had to guess.
Been there a while.
So, yeah. It's done a great job.
I know it's been there for a while, it's just that, you know, I'm just not so quick to give, well, invest happening, I'm not going to, sorry. So, Mr. Gabbal, I do have a question though. I know that there's a lot of challenges and this is phase three. But, but do we see any other things that we need to address?
There are things on this campus, if you recall, on the opposite side of the campus, you've got some erosion over there that's kind of maybe have irritated some of the neighbors. But more importantly, it's just the, the paving falls off. If you get too close to the edge, there's a drop-off there. We actually have in the bond to replace and improve the drainage on that entire side of the campus. We'll be coming back to you with that as well, but that's in the bond. That's why we've kind of separated this, because that half is actually part of the bond.
Okay, that's why I was asking.
That's what I was curious about too, because I, I was thinking, okay, it'll be separate.
Yeah. So, and, and again, you're not really committing anything, you're just giving us permission to move forward with design. We will come back to you with the actual pricing for you to consider later. And in the meantime, like I say, a few bake sales or candy bar sales or something, you might help out with funding. Yeah.
So my question for you on that retaining wall, you said it's buckled, you know, if that goes, does that sound like?
No, if it goes, it's going to continue over geologic time to continue to do this. The bigger issue to me is not so much the, we can't really. The bigger issue to me is not so much the, we can't really straighten the wall. But to get accessibility, we need to make some modifications to that area, which means we might as well replace that retaining wall properly. But the erosion downstream of the retaining wall, under the flat work, where the benches are and everything else, that continues to be even a bigger problem. So we want to mitigate the discharge that's coming down, creating the erosion, and addressing that retaining wall in combination with a ramp and appropriate stairs to get down. There's really the key. It's all together.
I believe in our initial concept of it, you know, what they brought back. And then when we started talking about it, we're looking at taking out a lot of the retaining walls and actually doing some different things to where the retaining walls kind of come out of play.
Yeah, it'll still be there, it just won't be as extensive.
Eric, curiosity, what's the lifespan of a retaining wall?
Pardon me?
What's the lifespan of a retaining wall?
I don't want to say if it's done right forever.
Well, no, yeah, but.
Honestly, yeah, you should never have an issue with it again. Because we're going to, like, as Dr. G indicated, it's broader than just replacing that structure. It's in combination with revised grading and drainage strategy so that we take some of the load off that wall. Correct.
I know everybody's concerned with the retaining wall, but the ADA requirement. When you come back with the budget, will you highlight that part?
Absolutely.
That's the most important part. If we do the retaining wall or not, all kids have to have access.
Right.
That's law. So that's a must, in my opinion. So that would, to me, would be at the top, and the retaining wall can be.
We'll actually create two points of access instead of just one right now.
It's not that we don't have access. We can get access to it, we're just going to make it better.
Well, that little piece of grass right there, if I'm a child in a wheelchair, that's.
You want somebody hanging on to you.
I want to be able to wheel myself to that space.
So, and that's a great point. The, you have to recognize that that is, I think, some, almost nine, 10 feet of elevation change. And so if you can, if you just think about one and 12, your slope cannot be more than one and 12. And so when you take nine feet, that is a long ramp. So we're talking about switchbacks and that type of thing. And that's a big chunk of it.
So I'd rather spend the money there, but whatever the numbers are.
That's the challenge, it's all integral.
Yeah, whatever the numbers are, if you'll just highlight that part, and then we can.
You got it.
Dr. Boe, do you have any additional questions?
No, I'm ready.
And do we have any additional questions on the left?
Yeah.
Dr. Boe?
I make a motion to approve additional campus improvements at James A. Arthur Early Childhood Center.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Boe.
Wait, wait, she's not in.
To address erosion, draining, and ADA excess issues.
Second.
That was completely motion by Dr. Boe. And then appropriately, second. Why, Mr. Glove, you all in favor, if you know by eye?
Eye.
Any of both. And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And from there, we will go on to section 8B, which discusses and considers approval of the HVAC required purchase at Kennedale High School and KHS Fieldhouse related to the 2023 bond. I've got a feeling that Mr. Guevara is back again.
Yes, sir, thank you. You know, this falls in the category of several hundred things that everybody is excited and wants to get done right now, now that the bond is passed. And so with the challenges that you had, particularly last, I'll say, fall semester with the field house and keeping that, the climate in that facility comfortable for the athletes. We, you guys, we got through it barely with the help of some temporary units and E3 and some small work they did. But that is a priority. You also have a unit in the high school, I think it's room 301, that is out. And so we've had to move kids out of that unit. So we've got some priorities we want to try to address prior to school starting. And so what we've asked E3 to do, they've got an entire package. You guys, remember, we brought them to you and recommended a design build approach to that. They have stepped up and identified a proposal to address these specific units. There's nine units between the field house and the one unit over room 301. What we're proposing tonight is authorization to go ahead and pre-purchase those units, at least issue a PO so we can get into the supply chain on the manufacture of those units so we're confident we can have those prior to the summer months and get those things knocked out so that when kids come back for fall sports, their field house is ready and we're ready to receive kids in room 301. The rest of the projects will, again, we may have those as well, but it's an opportunity. We're gaining at least 30, if not 60, days in terms of manufacturer. Your package shows you the lead time and the cost for the four manufacturers that we reached out to for costing, costs that E3 did. Our recommendation is that you consider Lennox. Couple reasons for that. They have a very close lead time compared to Train and Dyken. We kind of didn't consider Carrier because of the price. But one of the real key reasons why we're recommending Lennox is those are the types of units that we put in at Patterson in the system rehab that we did there. Lennox is a, is a system that your HVAC team is very familiar with. They can drive 10 minutes down the road to Fort Worth to the parts house to get pieces for the units and get them back on track. Dyken is a little more particular, sometimes a little more difficult to get pricing. And those units are, they operate a little bit differently. Good units, we've put them in schools, E3 has experience with them. But I think as we go for a district-wide upgrade to your systems, we're trying to minimize the parts and pieces and different manufacturers and warranties that you have to deal with. And so we're, it's an opportunity. I think the pricing is such that it warrants considering going with them to keep things on the same plane as you move forward with upgrades. They were competitive on the pricing, and they've got good lead times, which allows us to get the work done this summer. So our recommendation would be that you consider Lennox and allow us to move forward with that. Again, we're just pre-purchasing these units. The actual installation will be part of the turnkey package. It will be bringing back to you in March for consideration.
Any addition, any questions for Mr. Guevara regarding this assessment, Dr. Boe?
I know you just compared Lennox and Dyken. And I heard what you said about Lennox, that we put those in Patterson, so we're familiar with those. Parts are close by, but Train, Lennox to Train.
Haven't had good experience recently with Train, and I can speak personally, and no offense to Train. They make some fine systems. Our biggest issue with Train has been the actual controls component. Train is very particular about their priority systems in terms of controls. So they're reluctant, if not belligerent sometimes, about allowing access to their back net systems that allow the controls to look at and perhaps manipulate some of the other specifics, like humidity, set points, those types of things. And so we've also had issues with service. We've also had issues with warranty. And I think, frankly, Kennedale's had some challenges with Train over the years as well. Lennox has been a system, Ms. Moad can chime in on that. But I think Lennox has been something that your guys have been easy to main, you know, have more easily maintained, repaired, and kept running for years. And so that's kind of, that's really our primary reason.
And let me turn it on the control systems. We've already invested heavily in ideal impact for control systems. And so we don't need trains, control systems, or we have ideal impact.
Yeah.
And we've also looking at changing up the thermostat, swapping over. So that's another investment that we've already committed to.
We want it to all be, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any additional questions from the right side?
So I have a question about, so the roofs to the field house, are we redoing the roofs? Are these going on the roofs? Maybe that's the first.
They are.
And the roofs are okay to take these systems on there, or? Because I know that, like, the high school has.
Yes. No, we actually are a couple of weeks away from having the roof packages complete so we can put those out on the street. In an ideal world, we would coordinate the roof work with the HVAC work. So a lot of these units will likely require at least a curb adapter, or perhaps even a new curb. And so we want to try to mitigate the challenges of re-roofing and then coming back and tearing off a unit, having to pull the roofing back, set a new curb. We also want to try to minimize setting a unit and then coming back and having to re-roof around that. In a perfect world, that would happen, but it's not a perfect world. So we're going to have to deal with that challenge. But the answer to your question is, we're going to try to coordinate as best we can. But it's going to be a product or a, it's going to be dependent upon how quickly we can get the units, and maybe even perhaps how quickly we can get ISO boards for the roofing, fasteners, materials, that type of thing. So we're going to juggle that as best we can, try to coordinate it. E3's committed to that, we're, the roofing consultant's committed to that. But if we can get the roofing package out here pretty quickly, we can begin to set some priorities. And hopefully, we'll have units available at the same time we're tackling some of these roofs. I don't anticipate us being able to do all of them, but I do see some overlap where we'll be able to make that efficient as we can.
Okay, and Ms. Moad, did you have a question? I just want to finish up with the right-hand side before I go to the left. And from the left-hand side, were there additional questions for Mr. Guevara?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Glove.
I move to approve the purchase of HVAC equipment for Kennedale High School and the KHS Fieldhouse related to the 2023 bond.
Motion by Mr. Glove, and I believe Ms. B. Gomez was the second on that one. Okay, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by eye?
Eye.
Any of both. And that passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. We will now move to section 8C. That's the order of the General School Board to trust the election for May 4, 2024.
All right, so the election in May, on May 4, we have to call for an election. If an election is not needed, we will always be able to cancel it before that time. But this is just making sure that we have it calling in time before the deadline of 15.
And this is for place one, place two, and place three.
Sorry, I said 15, 16, sorry.
Okay, so place one, place two, place three, and place one currently is occupied by Ms. Glove. Place two currently occupied by Ms. B. Gomez, and place three is currently occupied by Dr. Boe. Okay, and we know that we have to do this, and we'll hope we won't have to, but.
I will make a motion that the Kennedale ISD Board of Trustees call for a board election for three trustee positions, place one, two, and three, to be conducted on May 4, 2024.
Motion by Ms. Cruz.
Second.
And that is second by Mr. Esteban Serta. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by eye?
Eye.
Any post? And that motion passes unanimously. We'll then move to section 8D. That's the second, and consider possible action on this second reading of update of 122.
So at the last board meeting, you were given the first reading, so you should have had that to go through. I've had no questions asked about it. It's pretty cut and dry. When you look at the old version with the new additions to it, you see what they've changed. Nothing significant there, so I say we recommend adopting it as proposed by Tasby.
And were there any questions regarding that? No, it's the second reading, we've already been through it once. And if there's a question, I will accept the motion on that part as well.
I move that the board make revisions to local policies affected by update 122 as recommended by Tasby Policy Service and District Administration.
Again, motion by Mr. Glove.
Sorry.
And second again by Mr. Esteban.
You got a little bit else playing nice.
All these folks here want to get home to their families, and I just want to get them there.
You're just trying to facilitate that?
Nobody's getting home faster, getting paid after.
Favorite promotion, let it be known by eye?
Eye.
Any post? And that motion passes unanimously as well. And that takes us to section number nine, which is the superintendent's report.
All right, and first order, or A on there, is the district attendance report, enrollment report, sorry. Currently, we are down 18 students. We have 15 open enrollment transfers that we have in the district. I'm not going to read it all to you, you can see how it's going. KHS has had five early graduates, six Success Center graduates have had seven. So that kind of affects some of those numbers as well. Attendance rates, a little below 95% overall. Would like to be up above 95%, but we're working on that. And then, of course, we've got the new housing developments. We have a total of 45 new to district students from those housing developments. And currently, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven different developments that are bringing us 45 new students to district. Overall, we have 117 that are coming from those housing developments, the 45 new to district. And any questions on the enrollment numbers? Construction update, you just heard from two of the major things that are going on. The baseball and soft auction concession stands are progressing. Not weather and cold weather and rain, and another ruptured water line that was not buried at a proper depth. That happened the other day, slows things down, but making progress. I think in the next two weeks, you're going to see substantial change in progress out there, and you'll see the parking lot getting back, put back together. That's kind of the timeline that we're on.
So any chance that there are any additional water lines that we're going to run into?
I have no idea.
Don't even put that out there, Mr. Owens.
I will just say.
Will it be up and running before the season starts?
Now, the season will have already began, but the, we're looking at the scrimmages and all that being moved away to, so that we're not playing those here. But by the time we get to the tournament, hopefully, it should be up and running to the point where bathrooms will be accessible.
Which is February 22.
Part of the problem is going to be getting the health department, getting the okay and the permits and all that stuff to be able to go through with the actual concession side. But the locker, the official locker room and the bathroom should be, you know, ready by that time.
We might not be able to sell food, but we can have a restroom.
That's kind of the construction update. We're progressing, everything is moving along. It's just, everything takes, it's a process, and everything takes, takes time to get worked through. So lots of meetings that we have to go through. And that brings us to the Thompson Institute. We will be leaving for that in February. We've already, Ashley has booked all of the rooms. We have, we will get a team of eight credit for that training when we go there. We will probably be the only district that has all trustees there, which is, once again, I go back to testimony, you know, you guys are going above and beyond. So I think that's a great thing, and that allows us to get the team of eight training. One of the things that we'll be doing when we're there, every time we go, we get, we have a book study. Basically, we're giving a book. They gave the superintendent the book ahead of time. It's called Innovator's Mindset by George Kuros. George Kuros will be coming and speaking and talking to us all during that session. And this will tie into some of our TSL stuff that we're working on right now. Executive team has been working on developing the Portrait of a Graduate for Kennedale ISD. And that kind of ties directly into what we are studying with this book. So I'm looking forward to that. We have, in your, you have in your mail, you have some of the travel stuff. If you're not planning on traveling with me in the suburban, if you're planning on taking your own vehicle, the steps and keeping your receipts for meals and for your mileage and that, so, okay? Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Dr. G.
Okay.
That will move us to section 10, which is board discussion. Next thing, first thing up, why don't we take a look at the upcoming dates and times for our next meeting?
February's scheduled, with us going to, I also have the TAMS Capital Conference. And then I have the presentation in Galveston that I'm doing. So my schedule is kind of crazy in February, so trying to work around those dates. These are the three options for the regular board meeting and what will work best for y'all and for me.
So why don't we take a look first at the first date that's on there, which is Thursday, February 15? How do we look on that date?
That's my preference.
That's the day before we leave, right?
Yep, it's the day before we leave from the conference.
That's fine.
It's my preference, too.
Everybody good over here? Over here, is everybody good on that?
Yes, sir.
I say we slap the table on February 15.
It's just going to be a quick turnaround in this meeting.
I already had him there in my calendar.
Probably third, it's the third one already.
Okay, so we're good with that one. So February 15 for the regular board meeting.
It's going to be the board meeting. All right, everybody got that?
Yep.
Next is going to be the Jostens Renaissance Program at Kennedale High School. The, that's going to, Ms. Glove or Ms. B. Gomez, did you want to go ahead and speak about that?
Yeah, so, well, I guess, I'm sorry, I'm. Ms. B. Gomez called me about this and was really ecstatic. It's a program that Ms. Paget put on. It's through Jostens who we do our, at the high school. They do the class rings, they do some of the senior photos, that kind of thing. It's apparently paid for by Jostens too. I thought it was really fascinating. She had, she was raving about it, she actually saw it, so I should probably let her speak, but I followed up with Paget. And so I was just, yeah, like I said, trying to get these folks home, so.
So, Ms. B. Gomez.
So, um, yes, my freshmen and I take another, I take two freshmen to school every morning and they were talking about an academic pep rally which intrigued me. It wasn't even my child that told me he got a ticket and was going to this thing. It was of course someone else. And so I was intrigued, I, I texted Mr. Cagle and I asked about it and he said, yeah, come on down. It was above and beyond anything that, I, I was so impressed. I also messaged a teacher there who gave me more information. I know Mr. Cagle was busy and it was really last minute. So they mentioned it was student-led, a group of students were the ones that actually went and got information on this and brought it to the high school and did a presentation on it. And its main focus is just this, you know, what everyone's, were, is already a big focus for this like positive reinforcement and, and really celebrating these kids that are doing wonderful things on campus. So it was an academic pep rally, so everyone last semester that had all A honor roll, A B honor roll or perfect attendance was invited to come. And they did it over one of the lunches and the whatever period is after that fifth period. So it was about an hour and forty-five minutes that, that it was almost three hundred students that got to come to the gym and sheffles and the culinary students prepared lunch for them. And then they had music playing, they had games, they had different rotations. They got to just hang out with their friends and be celebrated for this really positive thing. And in addition to that, one thing on Friday, the whole week they were doing things to really honor and recognize these upstander, upstanding citizens and they were passing out kindness clips. So teachers, you know, when they recognized something, they would write it and they got to clip it on their lanyard. So then as you're walking through the school, everyone can see, you know, that you've done something positive, which I love that. I mean, this is like my love language. I am constantly trying to figure out ways to really highlight. So as I said, it was a group of students and then a couple of teachers. So Ms. Paget and Ms. Springfield really were the main ones that helped get this off the ground. And from what I understand, they like even raised their own money to make this first one happen. They bought beads that the kids got, I don't know, they had candy prizes, like you name it. Like it was just a really fun party. And a lot of them said, you know, there's fires that happen every day on campus that really end up getting so much attention from staff that you have to take out these fires. But this is a way to honor and encourage and celebrate that ninety-eight percent of the campus that's really just doing awesome things.
So the recommendation is to expand?
Well.
I think it would be fantastic to take it to, and so I had called Sean about it right when I left because we were talking about the junior high too. I was like, God, this would be so cool to bring to the junior high level because, you know, some of these kids really need it.
I think, I think what she said about celebrating all these other students and what Ms. Paget said that really jumped out at me is, you know, it's, it's only like two percent of kids that are, are starting trouble. It's these other ninety-eight percent of kids that they get punished because of all the fires that we're talking about putting out. So, you know, yeah, those are always going to happen, but why don't we also try to take some time and celebrate those kids that are doing the right things?
And it could be such a ripple effect is the way I was looking at it. Like if you're real, if you're actively, you know, incrementally taking time to, you know, and it's above like a Paul Award, it's above, you know, this is like a whole group of students that.
Peer pressure is a thing and it works both ways.
That's right, well, and if you're, if, if you're dangling that carrot, I mean, this is like, I'm not going to wait till the end of the year to give them an award for getting a honor roll. I'm not going to wait till the end of the year like and have this one thing. No, this is like an active, every nine weeks, we're going to celebrate this and have a whole thing dedicated. And it wasn't even just like Jacob came home yesterday with a, with another clip. So, I mean, they're still doing this, it's like, it's, it's going to be a culture, a culture change on the campus. And I think Ms. Paget also said something about, well, anyway, she's excited about it.
She is very excited about it. She, now, Mr. Owens, when, when I brought, when I came to you about it after talking to Ms. Paget, I think you and I talked about maybe having them present next month and maybe looking at that. Obviously, we would want to explore, no? Okay, at the next board meeting on February fifteenth.
I think Dr. G also had a question.
Oh, of course, I had a statement. Mr. Cagle wanted the students who were part of the Renaissance Group to present to me. So four of the students presented their concept to me and they had a presentation and we sat and it's just those four and me and, you know, we did this presentation, kind of tied in with the student leadership group that I have. But several of them were on that, but some of them weren't. And this is all student-led.
That's, yeah.
They, they have sponsors, but this is a student-led group.
A hundred percent, they're the ones that brought it.
They were so excited about it and they went to a training for it. I think Johnson, Jostens possibly sponsors that. So, I mean, they were really, really excited about it and it's good to see kids and it's carrying over into that, so. I don't see how it could be a bad thing. Ms. Bruce, what do you think? No pressure.
Yeah, Karen was saying. This year, that is already what we started doing at our pep rallies, we had two pep rallies this year. And in addition to just celebrating, oh, it's football game tonight. We've also made sure that we have highlighted an academic or a citizenship, the seven citizenship pillars of Kennedale ISD. We've done one pep rally, one at the other. And our next pep rally in April, when we do track and field, we also will schedule some kind of academic celebration at the pep rally because we want to celebrate all things. So we've already started on doing that, but it was not as big as what the high school had the opportunity to do.
So proposals to sit there and have those kids come and present to y'all?
Would love to, yeah, would love to see that.
All right.
Guess we have one agenda item for the next meeting on the fifteenth?
No, I would like to hear what they have to say.
Okay.
Because I would love to bring it up to the elementary level.
It's, it's amazing.
Especially if they're going to pay for it.
I make the motions.
I'm going to get a motion in.
I think it was kind of sad, done.
All right.
Make up a motion.
There's no questions about it.
So the third item on what I wanted to go and discuss was talking about the board self-evaluation. We proved it's done in July. We've done it two different ways. Once we had like a, the formal sheet we went through and we wrote up, you know, exactly how you, what you, how you think we're doing. You know, not this area, that area, that other. And the next time we did it in July, we had it with the, I think it was like a team of eight type meeting. Okay? So the suggestion was made that we bring back a more of a formal type of a board evaluation where we can sit and discuss and evaluate ourselves in all these different areas. Which I totally am, am on board with, so.
So previously it's been done in July. We have switched my evaluation to July. So do you want to keep y'all's in July also or do you want to move it to like sooner? Or, you know, do you want to do it March, April, do you want to do it? Keep it in July?
I'm thinking we might want to do this a little bit before.
I would think maybe before election, just in case there's, not that, you know what I mean, like just so it's.
Roll off, but yeah.
Or just like, that, that way at least it's, it's almost like at the end of the year kind of a thing. Versus like two months in, if there ever is, anytime there's new people, then it would be, what am I evaluating on? I've been here for two months, kind of a thing.
That's the thing with July, that's, that's the downfall of July.
I think moving it.
The important numbers, they haven't been on the board yet, really, they're still getting their feet wet and stuff. So having it in April makes more.
April or May makes more sense.
Yeah.
Well, May, there'll be the new board members.
Or that's right, they get sworn in in May.
And then it would, April, April would be it.
I think April sounds like a good, a good month, it would be a good timeframe. What do you guys think, Jonathan?
Yeah.
April sounds good.
I'm waiting.
Three seconds that month.
We already made a motion, that's back to go.
Write that down.
There's no, I'm not right.
Write that down, John.
It's on the record.
We'll have that on the agenda then.
April, okay, so we just talked about the Thompson Leadership Institute. We know the date, sixteenth to the eighteenth, all right?
Okay, the session starts at three o'clock, so.
Leaving early.
You just need to be there before, check in the hotel. I don't think, we can check in the hotel officially till four o'clock, but there's places where we can keep luggage and all that, so. It starts at three.
Okay, the last thing, you know, we, I guess I was the person who really started talking about this at the beginning of, I guess, school year, you know, that I wanted to be more involved and more visible on the, on campuses. I know a lot of us are on campuses already anyway, but I think it's a great idea if we, we do show up. And this is more of a formal type of a, of a meeting, you know, like, you know, a group. Almost like a, a field trip, if you will, to the campuses.
Well, and I will preface this, you know, it was broached that three of you possibly wanted to go at the same time. And I'm like, well, I think that's going to happen, then I need to be with you. And so scheduling it to where if we have big groups going, that I'm with you on that, just so our, our staff are a little more comfortable. I will take that aspect of it. If you're going individually, I think that's one thing, but we start getting groups, that's going to, I, I think I would like to go with you on that.
I am, I have a point of question. Is this something special, like a school board visit the campus week? Because I'm, I'm wondering, because the dates are here. When I saw that, I was like, I don't remember hearing it.
I'm available to go with groups if you want to go in a group.
You can go whenever you want.
You can go wherever you want.
This makes it seem like it's a social life.
If you want to go as a group, then I would like to go with you and these are times that are available.
And the reason why there was additional times with there was because when we were talking about making a trip to one campus and three of us and then adding Mr. G in there, it's like, okay, well, that's only three of us. Well, maybe more board members would like to go to campuses as well. So why don't we just go and put some dates and times out there and, you know, and then that way we can all kind of schedule ourselves to do that.
So in case you didn't hear, Mr. G said three people would be intimidating, so now we're going to have the whole board. And him, and him, that's less intimidating.
It might be a good idea.
Maybe when we have three, it might be two, it might only be one, but.
Maybe, maybe less than a quorum, just saying.
Maybe.
I would like to keep in three, you know, no more than three.
Three max.
But, you know, different groups of three.
He just doesn't want to miss out.
I'll say that if anything, I would only be available on the ninth after twelve.
Well, the expectation is not for everyone to be.
Yeah, or if you don't.
Present on each one of them.
But I would love to. Don't go.
And there's no pressure for, you have to, see, I've got to take time off my job to be on.
Oh, no, I'm not taking time off.
Okay, so if you'd like to, this is just a time of, you know.
Yeah, that's why I said only that day.
You just proposed times because of my, my calendar and schedule. And if, if, if you're looking at groups going, then I would like to be part of that. So just to alleviate some of the stress with our staff. And then the thing is, if you'll just let Ashley know which, which times who and who may be wanting to go and we can coordinate that.
It's stressful for him.
She'll, she'll set up our calendar, okay?
Make a long story, Mr. G is concerned about us freaking out.
Do y'all agree with me?
No, they don't. They said, they said, come on.
They're not going to say anything.
They're laughing.
They would, I think they would, they're honest.
You're not intimidated by the board, don't come anytime.
Thank you, Ms. Core.
Thank you.
She's, she's making sure I put a cap ready.
Yeah, maybe that's where they.
Okay, all right. All right, that takes care of, that kicked for the eye, I want to cover for board discussion. Let's take a look at section eleven, which is personnel, Dr. G.
And like I said, I'm not going to read through it. You, you've got some things there, we've hired a few more personnel. We've had some people who have already turned in reservations effective at the end of the year. Not now, but at the end of the year. It's getting to be that time of the year again where that starts happening, so this is, this is pretty typical. So if you have any questions or anything, any concerns, we can go into closed session on certain personnel matters if you have the need. But I don't have anything that I have that's urgent or anything, so.
I just have a quick question. What positions, like what positions are they being hired in? It just says they're hired at a, at a campus, but what are they teaching or what are they?
You would ask me that, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
I second that.
Yeah, I made a motion to ask.
So it's for Ms. Wells, the question, and for?
Hang on, I was like, yeah.
Mr. Cagle's right here.
Cynthia Griffiths.
Cynthia Griffiths.
Oh, kindergarten teacher.
Okay.
We had the resignation in December and she was.
And then I guess Mr. Cagle left.
Mr. Cagle left, so.
Demora Jones, if anybody knows, but she's been.
An admin for district, for the district.
And then Susan.
Susan Schat?
Schat.
Schat or Schat?
Part-time diagnostician. We had one part-time diagnostician that left due to SSI and retirement stuff. And so she, our social security and retirement stuff and Susan replaced her.
Okay, thank you.
The remainder of the year was still a two-part full-time and had applicants for next school year, but nobody available to start from now to the time. Intervention paraprofessional, Demora Jones.
All right, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was all.
Any other things?
No, that was it. Usually sometimes they have like the position.
Not on there this time.
All right, so that's section eleven. Before I get to twelve, are there any issues that we need to discuss? In closed session? You have no issues? Ms. Glover?
Mr. President, I have motion to adjourn this meeting and get about here.